All right, we're going to call our planning commission meeting to order. This is the Provo City Planning Commission meeting on the twenty seventh of March and it is six P M. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Knudsen is going to lead us in that. Thank you. Although this is a public hearing, okay, yeah, sorry, first we need to do a roll call, so we'll start over here, please. Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflict.
Barbie de Soto, no conflicts.
And Jeff Willlock, no conflicts. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to be speak until called on. When speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so that the record is clear. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, you may step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior of any kind will not be tolerated. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or otherwise being disruptive during the hearing. And with that read, we will get right into our agenda. So for item one, the Provo City Council proposes ordinance text amendments to section fourteen dot thirty dot zero two zero. Permitted use of accessory dwelling units to remove specific zones from A D U allowance. Erin, Mr. Ardmore will come up and present this item.
Thank you. All right, so I've got one slide on this, so not too exciting. But this is coming from the City Council Office. We do have representatives of the office here as the applicant to to take up the applicant time. Amelia will will come up after me. So just real briefly, this has been a discussion point of the council to remove the Broadview Shores development, the S D P five zone from the A D U allowance, because currently everything west of I fifteen allows for it. And within their zone code themselves, they wrote that A D Us weren't permitted. So this is just to provide consistency with that. And the other one is with the R two P D zones. I identified all the R two P Ds in the city in your packet. The majority of them are townhomes and condos where A D Us just aren't realistically able to to be there. So so we're removing those as well. And nothing else is changing with the A D U through this through this amendment. Staff's recommending approval and I will, oh, wait, I do need to bring up something. I'm sorry. You'll notice that the language is a little bit different from your packets to what's on the screen. So the council office moved the ordinance around a little bit, so you see the S D P five zone is now in subsection three, where before it was combined in two B with our two P D. That was made because that map is identifying a number three, everything west of I fifteen. That seemed like the more appropriate section to put that exception there. No substantial change, the end result is the same, it's just the wording was moved around for you from your staff reports. That is all I have.
Does anyone have questions?
Okay. Um, just on that language there in section two and three, it feels like it's backwards. Can you give me an understanding of why it's written to be exclusive instead of inclusive? Like, why can't they just say these are the areas that allow it instead of all areas except for these?
Right.
Because it's not really very many areas.
From what I understand is it's similar to how the state wrote their A D U ordinance, where it's it's written almost negatively rather than
Right.
the way that would
Because this is very confusing. I was like, if I didn't know what you were getting at because of the staff report, I would have no idea what this was saying.
Yeah, that that has come up, but my understanding is because it's kind of following the form of the state.
Um, my other questions are just in regards to are are the A D Us currently allowed outright in these R two areas or only with neighbor approval right now? The ones on the east side?
On the east side, it would be typically with the neighborhood approval with the the two thirds, the O four O section.
Okay. Because I was just concerned that since it's such a huge swath, is it is it possible that some of these properties have already got it in their mind that they can have an A D U? And now without any public noticing, it's like individual property public noticing? Because it's such a huge one, I can't imagine that a mailing went out, so how do we worry about any backlash from there?
I'd honestly be surprised, because like I said, a lot of these are older townhomes and condos where you just that thought of A D U was just never imagined, right? Because you can't park it, you can't, yeah.
Okay, because there's a section in the list of properties, number nine. It says Sunridge Hills and some of those are twin homes and single family homes.
Right.
So I'm just, I know that some of them, for example, think that they can have an A D U. I don't know that it's been applied for and done legally, but like, what's the repercussion of that? Do we need to worry about?
No.
Oh, we thought we could do this and now we can't.
You know, if they did it legally, this would make it noninforming.
Okay.
If they didn't do it legally, then
Okay.
we're not too worried about it.
Okay. Is it possible just to peek at the permits and see if any of them fall in that?
Yes.
Just I'm just curious to see if anyone even thought it was a good idea ever in any of these nine.
I'd be happy to do that between now and the council hearing, for sure.
Okay. Just to see if somebody thought it was realistic or if there maybe will be a kerfuffle because the permission was taken away and somebody bought a property with the expectation that they could.
Yeah, that's good. That's a good insight. I'll look into that.
Okay, that's all.
Great questions, Commissioner Jensen, thank you. Any other questions?
I have questions, so just so I understand the map right now. Are these all the A D Us allowed? Or these are just the ones you're talking about that are in the gray on this map?
I'm sorry.
Are you, are these like, are these all the A D Us in Provo? Like, or is this just part of one this? Because I'm not as familiar with you as you
The existing map in
Yes.
in O two O?
Yes.
No, that's not all the areas.
The area you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, so those are all the the by right, east of I fifteen, that they can do it by right.
Okay.
Outside of that, they have to get the the two thirds neighbors.
Okay, and then it says all areas west of Interstate fifteen
Are permitted by right.
Permitted by right, okay.
I have a question for you, just taking a step back, I'm curious. I I read the kind of the each individual answers where it kind of says the, what is the public purpose of this? It says reasonable expectations and providing clarity. But what I what I'm curious about is like, what was the impetus for this?
The council.
So the the city council?
The city council, to have its staff to go this way.
Was there was there rationale provided? Would they provide that direction?
I defer to Amelia to give you some background.
Okay, awesome. Should we invite her up?
Yeah, if you have no more questions for me.
Any other questions for Ms. Ardmore? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything specifically prepared, but I'll kind of touch on some things you brought up here. And then if you have more questions, I will be happy to answer those. As far as the way it's written, we agree, it's kind of written confusing and hard to understand. But it does reflect the way that it's written in state codes. State code's also written this kind of backwards way, so we just copied it. And so we can change it, but that would require just rewriting the whole chapter. We just haven't done that yet. I'm trying to think, oh, impetus for this change, this was, so if you remember at the end of last year, we were here just doing a code cleanup to this ordinance. And in that discussion, while we were having that discussion at the council, there was some confusion about the previous year's amendments to this chapter. And they thought the R two P D and the S D P five zone were excluded from A D O allowance. And they in fact weren't, and so there was confusion there. And so the council just decided to go ahead and make make that clear. And so whether that was an admittance on on staff's part or just something that got lost in all the amendments we were making in twenty twenty two, I'm not quite sure, but now we're just going back and doing that. So it was just a council decision to add these zones.
I have another question, I don't know who can answer it, but what is, how does this compare to what A D Us are available in the rest of this, these areas?
These areas mean the rest of the city?
Like near it, neighboring neighboring neighborhoods and
The majority of the city in residential zones, you can't have A D Us. I think we're sitting at about like forty nine percent of residential zones in the city allow A D Us now with these changes. And so as far as zones touching these, I'm I'm not quite sure. On the west side, everything is except for the S D P five, which is just the Broadview Shores development. And then east of I fifteen in the R one zones, which is this map here, those are the areas that you're allowed to do it. And then specific, anything that went through the O four O special use permit pathway. But other than that, there's not a lot, it's about fifty fifty in residential zones throughout the city, so.
Okay, but that's mostly on the west side, then?
Yes.
Any other questions? I have two questions, and one one is a bit dense, but I just want to make sure I'm following. So the, this would basically override the special permission clause where if you get sixty six percent of adjacent property owners, it just basically is banning them outright, correct?
It's banning them outright as a permitted use, but if you want to, you can still go through the special use permit process and allow it there. So for example, if you are in the R one six, or we'll just take this, if you're in the R one, R two P T zone now, if once the council passes this, you can't have an A D U by right. But if you go through the special use permit process, you can.
Okay, so it's making it more like the rest of the east side and west like the west side?
Yes.
Do we know, I I saw on the staff report, it said the vast majority of the properties already in these areas would not work for A D Us either way because they're townhomes or proper or apartments or whatever. Do we know roughly how many units could be eligible for A D Us? Meaning they would meet the other requirements, but they just are not, will no longer going to be a permitted use?
I don't have those numbers, no.
Okay. You have a ballpark?
No.
Okay, all right. No worries, thank you so much.
Yep.
I have another question, sort of, I guess this is more like a general question. Why is there such an imbalance, I guess, between what's like A D Us on the east side versus the west side? Like, what is the reasoning for that?
That was also a council decision that they made. So in twenty twenty two, the council was looking at A D U policy and they wanted to both expand A D Us but not expand it throughout all residential units. So at that point, thirty three percent of this residential zones in the city allowed A D Us, they wanted to increase that but not go citywide. And so there is a lot of different options explored and they decided to go with residential zones on the west side.
Okay, so that was their decision to to not have the east side allow that.
Correct.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate all the information. So we are now going to open the hearing to public comments. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If we, if the commission has questions, we will invite you to come up back to the microphone at that time. This time is for comments only, if you have questions about an item, please speak with the staff privately. If there are any neighborhood district chairs present, we would like to invite you first to speak and you'll have three minutes. All right, seeing as I'm not seeing any district chairs, a neighborhood district chair stepping up, we will now open it to the general public. You have two minutes to make each comment. This is not the item people are here for. All right, seeing as there are no further comments, we will close public comments. The commission will now discuss amongst ourselves. So how are we feeling, commissioners?
I think this is a a great cleanup. I love that the nine areas that are delineated on page two of the staff report. If you sort of visualize them on a map, they're very widely distributed throughout the city. So it's not like we're saying this portion of the city can't do something and this portion can. I think it's important to note that even with these changes, that the city exceeds the state's requirement. So we're not cheating at anything here. On one hand, it doesn't further the the general plan goals of of housing, but on another hand, it does. So I think it protects neighborhoods by making sure we're not putting A D Us where they shouldn't go. And it also protects neighborhoods by allowing diversity in other ones. I think it's confusing because there's a map here. But the map is just basically what's already there and it's not what we're amending tonight. The map just shows the R one zones that already are allowed. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Ardmore, every R one zone in the city can do it through the petition, the getting signatures process. These are just the ones that can do it without the signatures, right? So we're not saying these are the only parts of the city that can do this. And the map is completely unrelated to the R two P D thing that they're omitting from it. So if that was confusing, I just want to make sure we all understand that. So I don't actually have a problem with it. I think it's an important cleanup and a good safety check, so.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Hill.
I also think it's a good cleanup, it sounds like that was always the intent and we needed to just make things consistent, so they're not seeing two different things. If I can make a recommendation, I actually think the map is confusing and misleading because it cuts off the west side of the city, and especially since Broadview Shores is now not permitted, etc. We need to expand that map to show the whole city and more frankly, honestly, show that we've made an imbalance, that the west side has a lot more, things like that. It's almost like it's, I don't want to be conspiracy theorists, but that that fact's being hidden in this map. We should have a map of the whole city with the zones that allow it.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem with this particular thing, but I think that there is a lot of imbalance and and there's a lot of problems with that, obviously, but I think one of the big ones is only making the density go that way is like, I just don't think it's, I don't know. I I don't think it's balanced and I think knowing services are on this side of the freeway.
And public transportation and things like that.
Yeah, I think it's kind of going against the general plan in terms of like increasing walkability, clean air, you know, reducing traffic, all of that. I think it needs to be a lot more balanced across the city, but that's not what's up before us right now. So I agree, it's a good cleanup, it's clear, it's clearer.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess it's, yeah, I'll just add a couple of comments. I think I agree with a lot of what Commissioner De Soto is saying, it's just, I think in general, it's an odd arrangement, but I guess it's the political thing we came to. A D Us help young families being able to afford mortgages in a city where our average mortgage is over a half million dollars. And it also can provide alternative housing arrangements for all sorts of people. So I think it's a bummer that we're sort of maybe making less areas of the city intended for that purpose, but there still is the workaround where people can go talk to their neighbors and get it approved. So I'm, I guess I'll support the cleanup.
I think it's important for us to understand that there's also safeguards in place with the petition process that you have to have the parking, you have to have, every year you have to, am I remembering that right? You have to renew your your application. And so when done correctly, it will be done well. And so if somebody lives in a place that they actually can't provide those, just because they get signatures doesn't mean they're actually going to be able to have an accessory dwelling unit.
That's actually not the problem I have. What I what I think is a problem is more like allowing it by, the opposite of that, allowing it by right in a certain area. And then these, in other words, there's like a protectionism that I think is not equally applied toward all the neighborhoods. So either have that work in a way that is, I mean, I think that should be consistent as well. I think, yes, I think they should all have a good process. I just think they should be more balanced, allowed in a more balanced way
I agree.
across the city.
If I remember correctly, when when it was passed originally, I think the logic or the reasoning that was used for starting with the west side was because they were trying to meet the goals of affordable housing and family centric housing and homeownership and because you have to live in the you, it has to be owner occupied. So somebody who's who's an out of state landlord can't have an A D U because they're not the the owner. And I think maybe that was the logic that led to, we want these things in the west side, we want owner occupancy, we don't want it to become a rental haven, and so it's sort of in maybe a backwards way, that's where it came from.
Yeah, I I definitely, I I think there should not be any ones that are not owner occupied anywhere, in my opinion, like I feel.
Well, that's that's true, no matter where it is.
Yeah, yeah, so I so I just mean, like, I think that should, there should still be high standards, owner occupancy, all the checks, but that should be allowed more broadly or encouraged more broadly.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for item number one. Provo City Council proposes ordinance text amendments to section fourteen point three oh point O two O. Permitted use of accessory dwelling units to remove specific zones from A D U allowance, citywide application.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion has a second, thank you. I'll call for a vote then.
Can we discuss the motion?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Is there a way we can formally recommend that that map be expanded to include the entire city as part of that motion?
We would need to amend the motion if we wanted to do that. Open to that discussion, if you think that's important.
Well, since we're making a recommendation anyway, I think it would be very easy to say that we forward a positive recommendation with the additional recommendation that they consider updating the map to to not be an exclusive map, but to be, to show everything that's that's
Citywide. Minus maybe a nun's park area or something.
True.
Uh, yeah, I think that's, I I I, we could add that to the motion, is that okay? So just to clarify, we're adding an emotion along along with the forward recommendation to also include a broader map that takes into account the the whole city, the west side and the east side.
Do we need to like remake a new motion and resecond it? Okay.
Okay, so on with that, I will call for a vote. Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye on that. All right, we'll now move to item number two on our agenda. Provo City Development Services requests ordinance text amendments to chapter fifteen dot twenty dot one twenty parkways, citywide application. And I'd like to invite Hannah Salz up to present.
Hopefully, this follows very much in the footsteps of the earlier artificial turf amendment. We're just applying similar logic to park strips, which were omitted from the first application amendment brought to you. After your vote on this proposed amendment, if you forward a positive recommendation, this amendment for park strips and the previous one you made to the council with the front yards will be combined into one amendment and made to the code at the same time as just part of a general artificial turf cleanup. Our code currently divides park strips into categories based on whether they're narrower than four feet or wider, or four feet or wider. In this case, park strips narrower than four feet, staff is recommending permitting artificial turf without restriction. We already permit for concrete, preferable pavers, similar non vegetative ground cover to cover one hundred percent of the strip. Artificial turf seems like it would meet the same standards. If it's wider than four feet, then artificial turf would be permitted with the same requirements as in front yards, up to sixty percent and must comply with the same installation requirements. Because city staff has already determined that park strips equal to or wider than four feet are an ideal environment for trees. This supports that while being consistent with other logic as it's been applied throughout the code. With the noted addition that outdoor carpeting is prohibited in both, which is language that was added to the front yard cleanup, is now being added here. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Jensen.
So just to restate, the city council has not approved the one that we previously sent on because you're adding this to it before it goes to them?
Correct, it's on pause.
And then, and the second thing, I just had some language suggestions on the last page, A and B. So it seemed redundant to me to say outdoor carpeting shall not be used in landscaping in both paragraphs. Is that something you could maybe put like bullet point C and just so it covers both of them or something?
It could be, but from a staff perspective, as we are stemming and honing in on the code, we tend to look at that most relevant paragraph.
Okay. The, I was also confused about whether it was a shall or a may at A, parkways less than four feet in width. Shall we be landscaped? Should that be maybe landscaped because they don't have to do those things or are you saying that they have to?
We do require them to be landscaped in some way, so it's not just rocks and weeds and left.
Okay, so the shall is good for that.
Yes.
And then the other one was at the beginning of the last blue section in in B. Artificial turf shall not exceed sixty percent of the unbuilt surface area. I felt like that the way it read before, it should be artificial turf and other non vegetative ground cover shall not exceed sixty percent of the unbuilt surface area. Because you're saying all of them that are allowed, right? Not just turf?
Uh, yes, and we can clean up some of that language, the sentence before.
Because the sentence before, I forgot to mention too, tree canopy, artificial turf, comma, rocks, comma, and weeds. I would put rocks in there just because you'd listed it before as something that would be permissible. And I wondered if maybe you wanted to point out that your artificial turf falls in the same category as rocks?
Uh, yes, that list is meant to include other technically vegetative covering. Trees are technically vegetative, so are weeds. Artificial turf is not technically vegetative.
Okay, so you're saying it on both sides, okay.
Spot in the front yard landscaping, so that's a parallel. If you'd like to amend it, though, we of course can do that.
No, those were just the things that I was a little confused about the wording, so I wanted to make sure that it read the way you wanted it to. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So what is, how does the code define a parkway?
It's that strip of land between the sidewalk and the curb or street.
What about islands inside of parking lots? What are those?
Those are separate as islands.
Okay, they're called islands.
Different section of landscaping.
All right. I want, the reason I ask is I was at Sam's Club and I just saw a very large island with artificial turf. And I was thinking about this item and I was like, oh, I wonder if that would be item. Do we have, or is there any turf regulation around those to be consistent?
Not currently, we do have vegetative coverage requirements and tree requirements, but we haven't approached artificial turf there. It's
Not very common.
Areas, yeah, that's something that we can look at if planning commission would like and bring a recommendation.
I don't feel strongly, I just was thinking about it.
Staff currently has no concerns and hasn't brought anything forward.
I don't have a concern either. Any other questions?
Okay, Commissioner Hill. One question, and I just bring this up because I think it might be confusing to some people as they're looking at this ordinance. What is the difference between outdoor carpet and artificial turf?
Oh, that is a great question. Artificial turf is meant to look like blades of grass. Outdoor carpet is often a short pile loop that is colored to be generally similar to green grass, but can come in any number of colors.
Okay, so there is a technical difference.
Outdoor carpeting, that's the the name you would buy on the box at Home Depot.
You'll you'll see them in batting cages if you ever go there.
Okay.
Awesome, thanks.
Or grandmother's porches.
Yeah, grandmother's porches.
That's exactly the material.
Yes. All right, thank you, I don't think there's any other questions.
Thank you.
We will now open the hearing to public comments. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Each person may make one comment. If you have any questions, we will invite you to come back to the microphone at that time. This time is for comments only, if you have questions, please speak outside with staff privately. Are there any neighborhood district chairs? I don't think I saw any come in, so in that case, I'll open it to public comments. You have two minutes each, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and make a comment. Yes, this is also not a controversial issue. All right, seeing as there's no one who would like to come up with any comments, we will now close public comments. And the commission will have a discussion entertaining this motion. Commissioner Jensen.
I feel like this goes right along with what we passed on before, that
I feel like this goes right along with what we passed on before, that it's consistent with the other non vegetative coverings and I have no problem with it.
I I feel the same way. Would anyone like to make a motion? It doesn't seem like unless were you going to say something, Commissioner Jensen?
Just I agree. I'll make a motion. Um. What am I supposed to say?
I make a motion to it's.
I make a motion to um uh for item two, Provo City Development Services request ordinance text amendments to chapter fifteen dot two oh dot one two oh parkways, citywide application um with a positive that we send uh let's see. Recommend approval. No, yeah, recommend approval to the city council. Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing as there's no discussion, we can call for a vote. Commissioner.
Aye.
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 And I will vote aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Is that Robert that seconded that?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, we're making progress. Item number three, Ruth Thomas requests an ordinance to text amendment to add forty four homes in the R one eight, one family residential zone to section one, four, three, zero, zero, two, zero Provo City Code to allow accessory dwelling units as permitted use for the geographical area approximately between eleven hundred east and twelve sixty east and eight twenty north and nine thirty north foothill neighborhood. All right, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitlock. All right, um, so yeah, this proposed amendments add the ADU overlay to those forty four homes in a small section of the foothills neighborhood using the multiple um the application for multiple homes code in fourteen thirty um oh four oh. Um, this application is the culmination of work and effort um that goes back to twenty nineteen um within that neighborhood. Um, so what I hope to do here today is just do a quick overview. Um, we'll go through some of the reasons for this proposal and then um some impacts and then finally staff recommendation. All right, so um this is the area we're talking about specifically. It's just east of Kiwanis Park on the border of the Wasatch neighborhood, which is just to the north. Um, like, um, Commissioner Whitlock said, it's between eleven hundred east, twelve sixty east, nine thirty north, eight twenty north, forty, like I said, forty four homes. Um, this amendment would add it to that map that we saw earlier tonight. Um, just this, just this little section to make make it another gray area. And this property is zoned, like you said, R one eight for a single family residential. All right. I want to go through some of the relevant code. I know there's a lot on the screen. Sorry about that. Um, but first um, Lee, I kind of talked about this earlier, but this code was actually one of the codes that was adopted in twenty twenty two. Um, this is actually the first multiple home ADU text amendment that we've gotten since that adoption. Um, and in that original staff report, they mentioned that the goal of the code was to be able to conditionally expand the permitted use of ADUs in areas primarily zoned for residential use throughout the city with the permission of neighbors. So in this code, um, it says that owners on multiple contiguous properties may submit an ordinance amendment um to designate ADUs as a permitted use for all subject properties with the following requirements in section subsection two, B and C, which is um a list of addresses has to be included um including the properties for which the permit is sought and then the immediately adjacent properties, which are just residentially zoned properties surrounding the subject area. And then um out of those properties, so the subject property and the immediately adjacent properties, sixty six percent of those properties have to provide their name, address and signature, property owners, sorry, have to provide their name, address and signature indicating that they are in support of this um ordinance amendment. So I did a quick little signature breakdown um for you, hopefully. I tried to make it look interesting, but hopefully it's not confusing. So there's, like I said, forty four areas, um, homes in the subject area that's in red. And then the kind of aqua aqua um color. Um, there's fifteen immediately adjacent residential properties. That's fifty nine total properties. Sixty six percent of that is thirty nine, so thirty nine signatures are needed. We received forty from the applicant. I should mention that the applicant is a former neighborhood chair as well of the foothills neighborhood. Um, thirty three of those signatures are from the subject area. Seven signatures are from the surrounding properties. We actually have every single, almost every single owner occupant has signed to say yes. One of them hasn't, but that's because they just recently moved in. Um, but no one has come up. Um, no one has come to us in dissent. No one has outspoken, you know, that one person has not said that they don't agree with this. Um, and then everyone that the applicant spoke to in those immediately adjacent residential properties, um, no one said that they don't agree with it as well. So that's great to know. Um, some reasons for this proposed amendment. Um, so the neighbors in this small section of the foothills neighborhood, as mentioned, they've been kind of talking about this since twenty nineteen. So according to neighborhood meeting records at that time, um, the neighbors did express frustration of the ADU code at that time um and came to the conclusion that having ADUs in this small section would provide the following. And so these first four points are from those neighborhood meetings. Um, so number one provides a way for owner occupants within a small neighborhood area to earn passive income without changing the visual residential profile in a way that a traditional rental would or could um could moderately increase density in a way that can be monitored by individual homeowners. Could increase the number of owner occupants in the subject area. Um, back at that time, they went and talked to the Wasatch neighborhood just above them who do have um an ADU overlay and they heard all great things. And then it also increases property values of owner occupied homes. Um, and then over the past couple of years, the applicant, um Ruth Thomas has provided input as we've done many ADU changes. I'm sure you're aware, we kind of talked about that earlier um to get a change into what it is today. And then again, culminating to this moment where we're able to finally come before you with a complete application. It also meets the general plan to allow for different types of housing in neighborhoods and allow for a mix of home sizing, home sizes at different price points, including ADUs and specifically goal one C states. Um, continue to examine zoning solutions in certain locations to promote ADUs in residential areas. So this would also meet the goals of the general plan. And then finally, I know the last reason, I'm sure there's many more, but um the last reason they put on here is that it provides additional housing options for current future city residents. Um, some, so these are some. I mean, I've I went back um and watched a lot of the city council meetings as this code was being adopted and and there was a lot of concerns that were brought up. Um, specifically having to do with the few that I highlighted here on the side. So all of the this list, those are all the things that are um addressed in the in the ADU code. Um, like we talked about earlier tonight, if you don't have an ADU overlay, you have to go through a special use permit process and you have to meet all of these requirements. If you have an ADU overlay, you do not have to go through the special use process, but you still have to meet all of those requirements. So the few that seem to be the ones that had the most concerns were appearance, occupancy, parking, and then the rental dwelling licenses. Again, I'm going to go through this really quickly because kind of talked about this earlier. Um, they're only permitted in conjunction with owner occupied homes to kind of make sure we can govern that and enforce that. Um, with rental dwelling licenses, they expire every year. They require owner occupants to come back in and renew. With that renewal, at least two forms of address verification are required to verify that continued owner occupancy. Deeds have to be recorded on the property to make sure those ADU restrictions are known by anyone um who comes in and buys the property of it. When the owner occupant moves, new property owner has to apply for that new rental dwelling license as well. And then um for parking, we already mentioned it, at least four off street parking spaces are required. Um, and then appearance, the ADU shall not alter the appearance of the structure as a one family detached dwelling and shall not resemble in any degree a two family dwelling. There should be no external evidence. So these are some things that we put in the code already to help mitigate most of those um potential impacts. Of course, you can never completely mitigate every single impact, but um we believe that these tools are great help. And there was some, there'd be something that will really help this neighborhood. If you recommend approval tonight. All right, so finally with, oh, and I should mention, there are some rental homes within the area, the subject area, but um just for the record, rental homes are not permitted to have ADUs. I know everyone here knows that, but I just want to make sure that's stated. So anyone who has a rental now cannot have an ADU. All right, so staff's recommendation is that uh is approval on this item. The applicant has met all the code requirements, has provided adequate signatures. Um, it does meet the goals of the general plan and it will help these neighbors do something that they've been wanting to do for a really long time. Are there any? And I'll just show you, this is where the ordinance amendment would be is that little red area. It'll be gray, but yeah, any questions?
Any questions? I I have one question, which, you know, again, just for my education.
Yeah.
Uh, short term rentals are not allowed, correct? Are these issues?
They're not allowed in, they're only allowed in zones that allow hotels.
Generally permit them.
That, correct?
So it's basically DT one DT two.
Yeah, uh huh, not residential zones.
Yep.
We did have a complaint. Anyways, yes, we've talked about that with um the applicant.
Ha- has there been any I, cause I I think this is one of the reasons why ADUs tend to be you know, some people not like them is short term rental issues. Um, and I know that there's been complaints about city enforcement around short term rentals. It's sort of very high bar. You can't just go to Airbnb and say, hey, this property is being short term rental. I see it listed in rent all the time. It's like is there any, is there any discussion on council to, we've had some discussion but about changing how we're able to enforce short term rental rules?
I think um a lot of those short term rental rules and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Aaron, but like the one about looking on the actual website. Like, I don't think we're allowed to do that. State code says we're not allowed to do that. Um. I think the short term rental companies made them put that in, but um, yeah, I think I mean, it is something that is difficult to enforce because people are coming and leaving and um. But we do have a really good enforcement team and I know they have these really um interesting tools that they are learning and using um different database tools that they can use to help verify short term rentals. Um, so yeah, um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I know about the state code, but when we had talked previously, I think it was during a study session, we said maybe actually going directly to the providers and seeing if we could get a report from them. And I don't know if we'd ever made movement on that.
Um, just from the council office, sorry.
Yeah, no.
Just interject. So our next council meeting, we're actually passing an ordinance regarding the short term rental regulation and we're actually going to pass it. So in order for hosting sites of short term rentals, in order for them to run a run a credit card payment, the uh short term rental that they're hosting on their site has to have a business license through the city. And the hosting site has to report to us who does and doesn't. It has to send us a list for taking that law from other cities around the country that have done it. And so we're just, we're passing that at our next council meeting. So if you want to watch that.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the update.
That was, that's great. Great timing. Thanks. Well, yeah. Any other questions?
I have another question. This is more about, um, I guess. How is there a problem at all with, say, um, you said you had said that it'll be on the deed for whoever buys it, that they have to get the permit. Is it a problem at all to have people who buy it and just plan to do it illegally and do it anyway and all of that? How much of that? How much of a problem is that in Provo, if any?
I'm I'm sure it's a problem everywhere. Um. I would hope that, well, all of these neighbors seem to have been very vigilant about, you know, in this area, very vigilant about their desire for an ADU. I would hope that if anyone's misusing that and anywhere in the city, that the um combination of the neighbors um noticing what's going on and also knowing the codes um will help us to be able, you know, we'll get a complaint and then we'll be able to enforce. We can't have enforcement uh offices on every street in the city, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
I guess I I wanted to ask, following up to that, uh, what what does that look like? What does the enforcement for that look like? Say you, somebody buys it. They live out of state or something or whatever as an investment. And they're renting it anyway. What does the enforcement look like for that?
So um, there's a lot of things you can do, something that, well, I did enforcement at my last job. I don't do it here, but something we did back there is um, we'd always check the county parcels. If the mailing address is in Colorado, we know that you know, they're not living there, right? That's that's where the owner lives. So we cross check with mailing addresses and that's what I did in this area as well. Um, also, like I said, complaints, could you?
I mean, what kind of what kind of consequences is that's what I'm getting at?
Oh.
What kind of consequences are there for people who just flout these rules the city has?
Right, so our our zoning enforcement group and development services tries to work with them. Uh, they do give them notice. Uh, typically give them a timeline to to fix the issue. Um, if they refuse to acknowledge it or or we don't hear anything back, they do get sent to justice court and then they have to appear before a judge and and there's there's things that way. Um, so yeah, there are enforcement steps that the city is currently taking and will continue to take on these um as we are made known of them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just I have one more thing really quick.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I was concerned about that because of the potential, uh, you said that the property values will go up.
Mm hmm.
Which seems like also an incentive to then do this and then sell, right? And also I wonder maybe one of you can answer, I don't know who, but um, the, is there a risk with some of these? Just a general thing about ADUs. If the property value goes up, then theoretically the rent goes up. Is this kind of undoing the thing we're trying to do at all? I don't know.
Well, theoretically, yes, but we don't, I mean, we don't have any type of control over what a private property owner wants to um charge their tenant. Um, so there's no way to to control that, right?
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
But theoretically, yes, that could happen and I'm sure it does happen. I um it is true though that ADUs, I mean, they're not luxury apartments. You, most of the time you don't even have use of the backyard or anything. So usually it is, like I lived in an ADU just over there for like two years. After I got married because that's all we could afford, you know? Um, so it is, it's not, I would hope that it wouldn't be so cost prohibitive that it would knock everyone out of the market. And also, um, ADU owners, those owner occupants, they want people to be living down there, right? So but yeah, we we can't, we can't really enforce rental rents with ADU owners.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, so now I'm going to invite the applicant to come speak if they're have a presentation. Uh, you will have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Following the presentation, we, if we have questions, we'll uh ask you.
Thank you. Um, can I ask you to see this slide that has the close up of the thing? Um, first of all, thank you for taking the time to consider this and um this is kind of one microcosm of the of the larger conversation that the city is having about ADUs. Oh, sure. My name is Ruth Eldridge Thomas. Um, I am a resident of the foothills neighborhood in Provo and vice chair of the District Two Neighborhood District. Did I get, I think I got it. Okay. Um, so we realized um that this is kind of one microcosm of a big conversation and and we hope that this will kind of provide localized benefits for our neighborhood and also maybe as as the first applicant in a group application under the city code, but certainly not in the city's history. Um, we can be provide some kind of uh what do you do? Is it cutting your teeth about about?
A pilot. You're piloting this for us. Thank you.
Um, as as Mary very thoroughly kind of said, um, I don't I don't have too much to say, but um this is, this has been an active discussion in in this neighborhood and in the surrounding neighborhoods for well on five years and something that we've been um kind of thoroughly discussed. Uh, one way that we look at this is kind of is a is a zone cleanup with benefits. And the reason I say that is because in this city block, um, there are actually five different zoning and ADU requirements within this set of forty four houses. Um, this is just a result of um ADUs that were grandfathered in when the when the zoning changed in the early nineteen nineties. Um, one house that has a point four acre S overlay that nobody really knows how or is not seeing how happened. Um, there's a a house on the on the right side that is zoned differently from the front yard to the backyard. So their backyard can have an ADU, but the front can't. And just a series of other things that is sort of accreted over time. So one of the So one of the, one of the things that we really wanted to do um when we first started talking about this as a neighborhood was, was just kind of set the bar straight for everybody. Um and also kind of make expectations very clear for, or and zoning very clear for people that were buying houses, um especially houses that had grandfathered ADUs that nobody was really kind of sure whether would, would, would transfer to new title owner or not. Um so those, that was the cleanup policy. The benefits policy are also kind of multitudinous. Um we're facing, as you can see, there are forty-four houses in this neighborhood and only sixty-eight percent of the houses have owner occupants. Um some of those are, are well-known and understood rentals and, and some of them, of, of, some of those are egregious examples of over occupancy that have come up in the past five to six years. Um that have uh while we as a neighborhood are very aware of the housing crises across the city and state, um um created what is effectively a, a mini housing bubble, a maxi mini housing bubble right, right in this area that made, that made houses extremely difficult to rent or to buy even in the context of housing prices across the rest of the city. Um this was a particular problem um beginning in twenty twenty um when consequently a lot of these houses went on, houses that have gone on the market in the past five years went on the market. Um uh as she said, we've also done kind of a, a longitudinal survey of neighborhood meeting minutes of the Wasatch neighborhood to our north. Um pe- people who have lived in the Wasatch neighborhood will know that um in the nineties and two thousands, that, that neighborhood kind of flipped from being a family, single hu- owner occupant place to a place that was by their neighborhood records, over seventy-five percent over occupied rentals. And their solution at that time was to do what was called an S overlay, um which now, again, looking from their neighborhood minutes and speaking to the neighborhood, has, has resulted in a complete turn of that number to where upwards of eighty percent of those homes are owner occupied with relatively stabilized um home prices. Uh so uh that was something that was very encouraging to us, especially considering the, the lot sizes and the, the, the nature of the houses in this area, that if it could have worked for the neighborhood directly adjacent to us, it also could work for our neighborhood. Um that having been said, um we are not anticipating that a large increase in the number of ADUs um as, as a result of this. And the, the reason is that a mixture of ADUs that already existed, again, trying to get this cleanup, ADUs that already existed because of various other kind of exceptions and codes that had happened. And also because the nature of these properties, like we've, we did a house-by-house survey of this property, uh of these properties over time. And a large majority of the houses that don't have ADUs already are on slab foundations or are otherwise, w- would, would be extremely, it would be a big investment in order to place ADUs on their properties. So that's something that we're, we're, I think we counted three houses that even could potentially house an ADU on those, on this site. So even though the city code would, has already covered for things like parking or the use of other public facilities, um we're, we're not expecting there to be the giant increase um in ADUs. If anything, it will be, it, it will be kind of modest at the beginning and then, and then steady if people decide to knock down their houses and to, to build that up, to, to rebuild them or something that would, that would um cause that to be effective. Um another thing to your point that I just, points that I wanted to mention of the owner occupants that live in this area, um I did a small survey of rental prices and most of them actually um that while, while there are, are many who are on fixed incomes, who use their properties, who use their ADUs as a, a supplement to social security and other fixed income issues, this is a CDBG area, uh qualified area. Um many of those owners and other owners rent these pro- properties at below market rates, um specifically to cater to audiences or um that include students and migrant populations. So while that's not obviously a guarantee, that is something that is kind of in the, in, in the generalized concerns and practices of the landlords in the neighborhoods. Um let me see. Uh some people have asked, why, why do a group application rather than individual applications? Well, one of the reasons why this took five years is because it turns out that getting sixty-six percent of people is, is extremely time-consuming process. I'm hoping that we'll get a neighborhood doctorate in city zoning laws as an honorary award at the end of this process. Um but even in a neighborhood that's tight-knit, as this one, where I know the name and, and kind of birthdate of every single person that lives in this neighborhood, um that process is, is very difficult. And e- and, and especially as Mary said, in an area where there, there is one abstention and all other in favors and that abstention exists because it's a family with lots of small kids that moved and bought their house three weeks ago. Um the, the, it's a, it's a difficult process to um to pass. Um so we're hoping i- in terms of, i- in terms of accomplishing a lot of things in t- with zoning cleanup to kind of be able to do that all at once, but also to just make things exceedingly clear. So that again, somebody who, who was buying a house next door to a house who has an ADU, just kind of has a better idea of, of what they're going for. Um the idea of the group application was also, was also brought up by the city council back in twenty nineteen when their laws were totally different. Um as a, as a way to help ease zoning enforcement of over occupancy, um which was a, a, a recommendation from the zoning office as well. So we're hoping that, uh that, that again, this um, that the benefits of adding this little piece of, of Provo to the existing ADU laws will be a, a, will have multiple benefits. Um just in closing, we're just, we're really happy to be able to be presenting this to you finally. Um we welcome questions both from you. Um I continue to welcome questions from neighbors and other people about this property.
Thank you so much, Ruth. Ed, do we have any questions?
I have a question, just to follow up to clarify something you said about the Wasatch neighborhood. And you said before, it was, were you saying that it was like rentals, they weren't owner occupied? Is that what you're saying?
You're non, non-owner occupied.
And then they were just like doing whatever, which, okay.
Yeah, and yeah, and you can look back. I mean, the, the neighborhood minutes are there where you can look back at it, but you can also, it was a big thing about Wasatch Elementary School because it was affecting um enrollments in the school because it was such a widespread practice in the lower Oak Hills neighborhood. Yeah.
I had a question. Uh it says in here that under parking, that additionally, this area requires parking permits. So you have a permit program?
We do have a permit program.
Okay. How was that run? How was that? Do, how do they get a permit?
Um I think you submit, it's like twenty-five dollars a year and you submit with your house title or something like that, and then they just mail it to you or, I, I think, it's not even a permit, I think they just cease to give you tickets um based on the license plate that you offer. If you'd like my detailed survey of the neighborhood opinions on the parking program, we can save that for another day.
Any other questions for the applicant? I, I have a question, just do, what, what, um can you just explain a little bit what you think caused that as this other neighborhood adopted this sort of ADU to shift to more owner occupied?
I can tell you what the neighborhood chairs thought. So there were two neighborhood chairs that were involved in this process um who I've kind of gotten to know. I know there were also some Oak Hills residents here that might be able to answer that, but the idea from the neighborhood chairs, which was corroborated by the zoning office, was that having an ADU overlay made zoning enforcement easier because it could be, it could be cross-referenced with county parcel records um rather than kind of knocking and hoping that people would tell the truth. That's obviously not my, my um area, but that, that's what was reported by, by those people.
Great, thanks for sharing that. Thank you, Ruth.
Yeah.
Anya, I think we're good with questions. Alright, uh we are now going to open the hearing to public comments. You've kind of heard this spiel already, so uh if there's any neighborhood chairs, please come forward. You have three minutes.
Um Kay Johnson, I'm the uh neighborhood chair of District Two and we're just here to uh e- express the support for the comedy that's been shown in this neighborhood and, and the good work that, that um, and that Ms. Thomas, Ms. Eldridge Thomas has, has done here. So uh we're all supportive there.
Thank you. Thank you, McKay. Alright, I will now open it up to general uh public comments. If anyone would like to come to the microphone, you have three minute, or two minutes.
Good evening. My name's Craig Carlisle. I live at thirteen oh two East Hillsdale Circle, which is just outside this area. I've lived in this area since nineteen eighty. I've been s- uh significantly involved in the efforts to make certain that it doesn't become a rental area. Um uh and it's gone from zoning enforcement issues to parking requirements, to increasing fines for violations, uh none of which, o- other than the parking uh program had a significant impact. But there's a lot of pressure on, on any area that surrounds uh BYU campus, as this does to become student residence. And, and if you go, and, and in the process of some of the things we've done in the past, Buddy Richards, um uh lived down here on, in the downtown area, did a study of um the history of, of the south campus area. The south campus area used to be what this neighborhood is, and what Oak Hills is. And what happened is uh BYU didn't have housing and so they asked the people to open up their homes to students and they did. And over time, and it initially is a great idea. I think that the, what they pres- present here on, on, on paper looks like a great idea, but it's, over time, it's, it's the camel's nose in the tent, uh, uh nose in the tent door. Uh and, and some of the enforcement issues that exist now, this is not going to solve enforcement issues because um the, you know, the staff is going to have to come in and if there's eleven over occupied homes or non-owner, uh owner occupied homes, that, that's going to, this, I don't think that, that changing a zone is going to solve an enforcement issue. Um and, and so my concern is that this becomes, because of this proximity to BYU, that it becomes another uh south campus area eventually. Um and I, your question is a comment I had in my mind, as soon as you increase the value, um which a rental will do, if you're able to rent part of your space, uh it, it, it goes contra-
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate the comments. Craig, my apologies. And.
Hi, Paul Evans in Pleasant View neighborhood in Provo. We've had uh ADUs in a neighborhood for forty years, fifty years. One of the changes that's occurred in the last five years regarding owner occupancy is uh individuals who purchase the home and then put their child as the owner on the trustee. Therefore, the child becomes the owner and then can have the ADU rental so that they then rent the ups, they live in the upstairs with some roommates and then they rent the bottom at the same time. It turns into de facto student, uh batching, single duplex. So that's one thing that's not anywhere, you know, on our enforcement ability to cover things, but it opens up that problem and it's an ongoing issue, at least in the north side of BYU campus.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Richard Snyder. Uh I live just uh in one of the adjacent properties to the north side of the proposed area. I'm very concerned that it kind of violates, well, first of all, I think the character of the neighborhood is single-family dwelling and, and I've seen rampant expansion of rentals and other kinds of things that uh I don't know that they're all legal to be had, but uh that tends to happen in that area. It is ripe for plucking when it comes to easy rental for our students. Uh and so I think you're kind of ripe for abuse there. Um it seems to fly in the face of the sixty-six percent of the adjacent neighbors. Cause if you go to the other slide that had those neighbors that had approval, you basically to the west have no neighbors because it's koanis park. To the east, you have no neighbors because it's all church property. Uh so essentially you have one string of houses to the south of eight twenty north. And then my property is the, the one to the north. It just seems like there's not a lot of input as it, as the ordinance seems to indicate that you want to make sure that two-thirds of the people in the area are approved. This one has a lot of city areas and church property areas that uh really, to me, just kind of skews. It makes it easier to say it met the criteria without really involving more people. And I think you're, you're prime for the property. Uh I know people within that area would love to have the opportunity to sell that to someone and then they're not responsible for what that out-of-state owner does with the property. And it's very easy to just turn into, as the gentleman before me just said, turns into a nightmare of enforcement for the city and just kind of violates the whole purpose of single-family dwellings. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Alright, seeing as there are no further commenters, we will now close public comments. The commission will now have a discussion and uh Ruth, I saw maybe you wanted to address some things. If the commission has some questions, we'll bring you back up to ask them.
I thought it was interesting when I did some math that there were thirty-three signatures in the red area out of forty-four properties, but there are also eleven properties in the red area that are rentals, so they're not owner occupied and they can't sign for that. So um to me, that means that a hundred percent of the people within the overlay are in favor. A hundred percent of the people that are already in compatibility with the ability to do this are in favor of it. Um I just wanted to throw that out. Um I think as far as the logic, could you go back to the slide that shows it a little further zoomed out? This one. If you look at the blue one, the little triangle um above this um shaded area is already part of the overlay to the north, which actually feels like it's more adjacent to this neighborhood. It's on the same street. Um so I feel like because it's got the park and the church on the east and west, that it's a logical connection instead of another area, but it's actually a continuation of the current area. Um so that seems like that's logical to me. Um but I do also have the concern that it may provide more housing options, but also raise the property and home prices. So if you can have an ADU, you're, you can automatically sell your home or rent your, you know, ma- bring in more income and so does that really address the affordability problem? Or does it just allow you to bring in income that will pay for the overpriced house? So um I don't know if that's, I, I tend to believe the data that um the Wasatch neighborhood experienced the turnaround because I remember back in the nineties when it was becoming a really um student-heavy, non-owner occupied area. And if it has in fact turned that around, I'd like to believe that that has had that effect. But I also believe what Mr. Evans said is happening and unfortunately, those, those enforcement loopholes fall on neighbors. And it's very frustrating as a neighbor to feel that responsibility to fix the problem because it relies on you to be a rat all the time. And so at some point, you just throw your hands up and say, never mind. So yes, this does present that as a, as a possible outcome. But I'd like to hope that it would also, I guess I just have a lot of faith in the parameters, the, the permits, that if someone's trying to do this correctly, that it will be done well because it has to be done well. And so the problems that you have are the people who are not going to follow the law anyway, whether there's an ADU zone there or not. So that wouldn't make me want to say you can't put an ADU zone there because those aren't the people that are going to be compliant anyway, in my, in my experience.
Yes, Commissioner Hill.
So my thoughts are kind of torn on this, I guess. I almost have contradictory thoughts because I have major misgivings with ADUs in general. But I do think this particular area might be a good place and I think they did it right. So let me go and go through those. When we started looking at ADUs in the city, early on, I was very curious about how early on, I was very curious about how they've worked in other cities, et cetera. And I also was very interested, especially in college towns, right? So I found a study in San Luis Obispo, which is a college town in California, and they had allowed ADUs. And they found what we're talking about tonight. First of all, house prices went up so much that it did not improve affordability at all. They then became ADU occupied and then quickly the owner decided they wanted to move to somewhere nicer and rented out the top as well, and they became essentially duplexes, right? And so these are real concerns. They do happen. I also think it's interesting whenever we see these, we always see arguments that seem to contradict. Can increases affordability raises house prices? It'll increase housing supply, but nobody's really going to do it, right? Like we always see these two sides. So I don't think ADUs are the wonderful solution they've made out to be. That said, I love that the way that this came about was essentially to go through the special use permit process and just say, everybody's in the neighborhood over two thirds approve it, so let's just approve it and be done, right? And I honestly wish that's how it was done in every neighborhood in the city. And then we won't have to do as many special permits because we already know if the neighborhoods are in favor or not, right? I think, again, talking about what Lisa was talking about, I like that it's kind of isolated from the other neighborhoods. I think the fact that it is a park and a church is actually a benefit to this because it creates a clear boundary and doesn't have as much effect on surrounding neighborhoods. And the major connection it does have to the top already allows it. And so it just kind of brings them into that area and creates a continuous zone. It's not an island by itself. And so I really like that as well. So those are my thoughts. I guess in general, I don't think ADUs are a wonderful panacea that will solve all our problems. But in this case, the neighborhood supports it very strongly. They've gone through the process, they've taken the time to do it. And so this is the type of place where I think we should say, yeah, we'll support that.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, gentlemen, but I also think that like I agree, it's not just like, there's not going to be one solution that solves it all, but I think in little, little pieces, we can kind of go toward hoping the supply increases and, and at least people will be able to find a place. Because I mean, I don't know that we'll get to lower the price, I mean, what can lower the prices? I don't know, but people don't even have a place to live, you know what I mean? There are people who want to live in Provo and there's not anything available. So I think increasing this and having it be owner occupied totally, you know, democratically within this area done, I think is a positive thing. And I did have a question, or I guess this kind of goes back to like, I totally see the issues with the parents buying property. I've heard of that a lot when I was in school too even. I don't know that there's anything that can be done because if the child that the parents buy the house for is the owner, they're the owner. I mean, there's no distinction about who, how they got the house, right? There's no way to change that. But I think it kind of comes down to being trusting most property owners to respect their neighbors and to respect the law. And I think, I mean, at a certain point, that's all we can do.
Do you have anything you want to add? No, I, I think there's some really great points made. To me, this is a very simple issue. This, the city passed a code that was in response to a state law that was passed in response to a housing crisis in our state. This applicant is following the code to the letter of the law. And so I think we don't have any other right really but to forward approval. I just think anything else would be not responsible and not what we're being asked to. Like it's, it's very clearly that they, according to evidence presented here, that they're following the code. Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
As a kind of an aside recommendation to the municipal council and to the city staff, I think because we've dealt with many similar issues, as we've talked about ADUs and short term rentals over the years, it might be a really good time to kind of do a, not a media blast, but to focus on educating the citizens of Provo about what a legal short term rental is and what, what the parameters of ADUs are. I remember a year and a half ago, two years ago, when, when whispers, because of the state code changing, lots of neighbors just automatically converted their basements to rentals because they only heard half of the information. And I think that's, that's probably happening citywide. So though we'd like to believe that, that this is the ADUs, that we can trust the system, I believe we can, because I believe that those people who are getting the permits, for the most part, are doing it by the book. It's the people that never intended to read the whole ordinance to find out that there's actually a permit required, who just converted their basements into an apartment and now they're creating a parking nightmare and whatever else in their neighborhoods. Those are still going to be a problem with or without ADUs. So I think, I think part of the problem with whenever you have widespread zoning violations is just education. And so I'm always pushing for, please, I know that these are also the same people that don't read the mayor's newsletter, but in any, any format that we can to just sort of educate the public on shoveling your sidewalks when it snows or, or bringing your trash can in from the curb or what you're not supposed to put in your recycling, we can also say, hey, did you know you can have an ADU only if? And make sure that it's very clear and concise to the points of, of, of the common misconceptions. And so we can use these changes that we've just, we've just talked about to help be an impetus for conversations. Every neighborhood district meeting can talk about it at their next rotation of meetings. And, and then you've got those people who are involved who understand the code. And we can just try and do that to, to, to make enforcement easier.
I agree, but I think it's like you said, there are people who, they're just not going to pay attention anyway and may not care. But it goes back to allowing, I mean, you said it, people get stressed out from having to tell them their neighbors, but it allows them recourse and empowerment and a way to say, this is not compliant and it's a burden on the neighborhood and this is what I'm going to do about it. It allows them to know what their, their resources are.
Well, now having been said, the more people that understand what the rules are, the less the responsibility is for one person to be the rat. If the whole neighborhood, like in, in, in this situation, understands the code, then the whole neighborhood is going to be working together. Well, a good percentage, sixty-six percent of the neighborhood
All the signatories.
will be working together to, to make sure that things happen in the way that they were intended to happen. And I, I just feel like when in you, when you've got neighborhoods that haven't gone through the process of that sixty-six percent, if you can help to educate a higher number of that neighborhood, then the rules will get enforced more equitably, and there will be less people that are trying to fly under the radar and more people that are trying to make their neighborhoods nice. So it's a slow process, but that's, I feel like the only way that I can see it happening logically.
Yeah, I agree. I also totally, I hear the public comments of concern and makes a lot of sense. I'm really glad they shared them. I think really it comes down to, like you said, enforcement, which is a combination of the, the neighborhood and the city. And so I just want to say that for the record that I hope the city continues to improve ways of enforcing these things. Couple of thoughts just on affordability. The way I think about this is there's a kind of two, two, just two thoughts. One is it's not, there's this supply and demand question, which is, you know, very macro, hard for people to, to wrap their heads around. And, and there's really nothing Provo itself can do to fix supply and demand. It's a Utah problem. But the way I think about it is providing additional options. When you're a young family or a student trying to find a place to live in this, if more ADUs means more options, just ask, and you know, you know, something goes on the market and there's a hundred applications in a day. And so to me, it's providing more options that are at lower general cost because there's a price per square foot in the city. And then if something with less, fewer square feet is going to be a more affordable option. And then the other thing is I think we tend to kind of talk out of both sides of the mouth on this debate. Sometimes we say, well, it's not really going to help affordability for the home buyer because it just increases the value commensurate for the rent to be wiped out. But then we say, well, investors are going to buy it because they're going to get a return. And so I think that's kind of, the reason investors buy it is because there is a return there. And so I'd rather return, go to an owner who's a member of our community and getting equity in the community. So those are my thoughts.
I just want to respond to that a little bit. I mean, we need to have conversations outside of here, I think, on this because it's a big issue.
Yeah.
But just real quick, one thing about ADUs is they increase the number of purchasable, purchasable units in the city by zero. Because it's already a purchasable unit. And they just took it that way. They added a rental unit, a small rental unit. And what I see, especially on the west side, is families who, as they grow and need more space, they move out of the city. And so yes, it creates an affordable option, but at the cost of an affordable option for a larger, more established family.
But that's actually counter to the argument that the applicant is making. There's, the applicant's actually saying, because we require ADUs to be owner occupied, you're actually creating a market incentive for them to remain owner occupied or for owners to come and buy them. And that's the experience of the other neighborhoods.
Usually smaller families or couples with no children, though.
Yeah, but I don't think we should discriminate on the types of families we want in our community.
Discriminating against big families then. So we need to have this debate somewhere else because that's not the question that's here.
Yeah, that's not the question at hand. But I, I appreciate the thoughts. I do, Commissioner Hill. It's a, it's a, it's a tough debate. All right, was anyone like to make a motion? Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we send a positive recommendation for, to the municipal council for item number three. Ruth Thomas requests an ordinance text amendment to add forty-four homes in the R one eight one family residential zone to section fourteen point three oh point oh two oh Provo City Code to allow accessory dwelling units as a permitted use for the geographical area approximately between eleven hundred east and twelve sixty east and eight twenty north to nine thirty north in the foothills neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Any second on that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? All right, seeing as there's no discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And I will vote aye. That is the forward of positive recognition unanimously. All right, we made it to the final item of the night. Good job, everyone. Thank you for sticking around. Item number four, Tyson Reynolds requests preliminary subdivision approval for a new eight lot, single family subdivision, including grading slopes over thirty percent in the R one eight, one family residential zone located at two thousand north Canyon Road Pleasant View neighborhood. Thank you.
So, let's see. Here are, here's the picture of without the bird's eye view, just the map so you can see the hill. So Provo City Code fifteen dot oh five dot one six zero one B states that no person shall be permitted to grade, cut, excavate, fill, or to erect any structure on undisturbed hillside areas that exceed a slope greater than thirty percent. However, fifteen dot zero seven dot zero one zero one Provo City Code allows planning commission to vary standards in title fifteen of the city code as follows. Application may be made by the developer to the Provo City Planning Commission for variance or variances from any numerical standard set forth in this title. So the applicant is requesting permission from the planning commission to grade the area to create additional building lots basically at the same elevation as Canyon Road. Staff believes that this is a reasonable option for the development of the land as the property exists now. So there's a picture of how it exists now. For any, for additional lots to be created on the hilltop, utilities would have to extend to the east. But to the east, there are plotted lots and homes that make new utility easements for additional homes difficult. By reducing the elevation of the hillside, utilities can be extended from the lots to the west to Canyon Road, which would be the preferable option by our public works department. Additionally, the fire department has noted that emergency vehicle access up the existing driveway, which is steep and narrow, is problematic and that grading the hillside would allow better access for their equipment. So the proposed development, this is the proposed eight lots. This would create eight lots that are in excess of eight thousand square feet. And staff believes that this would be a good benefit to the area. The proposed subdivision would have direct access onto Canyon Road. It's a city collector road, so new trips generated by the subdivision wouldn't directly impact an existing neighborhood. So staff would like to recommend approval of this with certain conditions that they address all CRC comments that we receive a geotechnical report, which I understand has been done. They record the final plat, supply the required bonding and revegetate the area as required. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. I'm having a hard time visualizing how this hillcut is going to look. Is it going to be just as steep as the current one? It'll just be all in one spot instead of around the curve or so is it going to be steeper because it has less room to make it? I'm just, I'm having a hard time envisioning, because that hill is huge. The, the drop off from top to bottom is huge. So I'm just having a hard time envisioning what, what it looks like. Does it really look like an undercut?
I'm sure David could address that. I know that it's like a two to one. I've heard him say it's a two to one cut. So I'm not sure what slope that creates. Once you have it, this is the how the grading would be done.
Because that almost looks twice as steep if it's to the same scale. Or is it? No, they're about just as far apart there. I would just, I would just love for somebody to explain to us. Because for me, if the, if the end grade is, looks very similar to the grade that's there before, I feel more comfortable with that.
Yes, so if you look at the lines that are on the right there, they're really close together. Each one of those lines represents like two feet of elevation change. So from the top down to the, where they get, where they kind of disappear right there. That's, that's what we call it, the two to one slope or for every two feet over, you go one foot down. So about about like that. And that, that goes down, it's like probably around fifty feet.
So that makes like thirty percent grade.
It'll be over thirty percent. Yeah. But, but then that makes that grade fairly level all the way up to Canyon Road. And it allows for them to use the water pressure zone out of Canyon Road, which was a problem with being up on top.
So am I correct that the grade that sticks out further is also about thirty-three, thirty-five percent?
The, the current contour right there has some thirty percent in there. And, and so that's what they're asking is, is it okay with the planning commission to actually remove all of that thirty percent and create a new slope on the east around fifty percent?
So the slope would be fifty on the new one?
Yeah.
Is it? Is it intended to be retained?
A two to one slope is a pretty conservative slope for being stable. But the geotech report would have to look at that slope stability and, and verify that, that that type of material that's there is capable of holding sta- stably at a two to one slope. That'll be one of the normal conditions we put on a grading permit.
Is there a greater risk depending on the height? Because you could have a two to one slope that extends over a hundred foot incline versus a fifty foot incline. Is there because it's only X number of feet above the end grade, is it less risky than if it were continuing on up the mountainside? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, you're saying like, since it's, since it's quite a long slope, is it more risky than a for sure, it's more risky than like a two foot slope, right? Because you're just that close, but the, the two to one slope is, is what we normally build our roads at. If, if we have a low lying area and we have to build a road up, that's normally what we make that slope up to the new elevation of the road is a two to one. So we're pretty comfortable with starting at that point. If we find some sensitive soils that indicate it needs to be flatter than that, then we'll have to address that. But right now, the kind of the starting point is a two to one. We'll look at their geotech report and the We'll look at their geotech report and the slope stability analysis and determine if that's the right slope.
Are there any standards of who they can get hired to do their geotech report? Does it have to be chosen by the city?
So they'll have their geotech report done by a licensed engineer, and they'll submit that report to us, and then we'll review it. If we have any question about that report, we'll send it out to a third party review to have them analyze it also and give us back a recommendation if it looks correct.
And at that point, what are the options? If, if the geotech, you know, if, let's pretend this was approved and they get the geotech report, you look at it, you have concerns, you just pull the plug, or do they come back for prime B?
They would have to go back and, and probably, like I would say, worst case scenario, they would have to flatten the slope out to a three to one slope.
And that would just take some of the lot options out? And if that happened, there would just be less buildable space?
Yeah, it would come down further into their, into their lots that they have planned there. But you could also mitigate that with a retaining wall. So there's, there's other ways to, to deal with that slope than just the slope.
Okay, one more time. How, what's the elevation? So we're talking fifty feet from top to bottom?
Yep. And, and the applicant can maybe zero in on exact numbers, but to me, when I look at the contours, I'm looking at about fifty feet of elevation change.
Okay.
Which, which puts it in a whole nother pressure zone for our water system.
Which is good.
Which is good. Because you can see all of the lots that are up there. If someone wanted to build at the elevation that that's currently at, they would have to bring water lines from that upper elevation to there and most likely buy one of those homes. I don't know. You know, it would be up to the developer how they handle that, but, but this is a good solution for, for, for utilities and for public safety.
Okay. Ms. Robinson? Am I understanding correctly, this gets rid of nineteen eighty north, and it gets rid of the two houses on the hilltop?
Yes.
Okay, so they're starting from scratch with a brand new?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I, I feel like, okay, I just want to clarify that I understand what's happening. They're moving the hill from this side to this side, the slope? Is that right? It's sloping up on Canyon Road this way, and then they're gonna flatten that out and put it, so it's sloping on the other side?
No, it'll still slope the same angle, but it'll be shifted closer. So the, if you look at the photograph with the two houses on the hill, those houses won't be there anymore because the mountain won't be there anymore. The mountain will be further east.
Okay.
Because it's coming down from up above, from the neighborhood up above and dropping down, so it'll just drop down sooner.
Okay.
It's not just an isolated mountain, which it kind of looks like in this picture.
Yeah.
It's hooked onto the mountain further over. Is that, is that helpful?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great clarifying question. Any other questions? All right, seeing as that, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward. You will have fifteen minutes for your presentation. When your time is up, you will hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Following your presentation, if you have questions, we'll invite you back up. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Rob Reynolds, the owner of the property, and hopefully I can clarify a few of the concerns. Some notable projects we've done within the city, and most recent that was a heavy or sizable earthwork project was the Provo City Temple. We, my company is the one that did all the earthwork of that project when sitting on its stilts, and was a very complicated. This particular project is not complicated. And as discussed, it's a project that we're taking the more often than not, they're steeper than thirty percent slopes on that hillside now, and that's why they're sloughing and doing other things, as well as the current slopes. If you look at it, according to even the previous pictures, there's been a lot of cuts already through that acreage. So I don't know what the code was for all the cuts that are already on the existing property, but it's already been disturbed. The geotech report has been submitted, when I realized that it hadn't been earlier submitted, and that code within the geotech, which was done by EarthTech, was recommended as slope one and a half to one, or no steeper than one and a half to one. Now, obviously, the projected slope on this is two to one, which is a lot more gradual than what the geotech sets as possible for, for slopes. The obviously, the desire of this is to make the ground more usable, also make utilities better available to it, so that we can utilize the property for beneficial use. Certain items in the removal of the dirt, trying to mitigate issues that could be for surrounding neighborhoods, is how we dispose of the dirt, which is away from the city. They'll come out of the site, turn south, and go through the main arteries to removing the dirt, because the dirt is desired for another project out west that is owned by another company. And so some of the issues of, as far as affecting the neighborhood, it will not be going into the neighborhood, it'll be coming and leaving and going for the stadium there on North Canyon and heading out west. Areas that we've looked at to make sure that we try to minimize the effect on the neighborhood is in the process that this dirt and grading would be done in a, a short period of time. And so to mitigate issues that sometimes dust and the like, there's plenty of water on the site. We likewise would have a water truck as necessary to make sure that we aren't dusting the neighborhood, even though the material on the site is very granular overall. So it's naturally somewhat dust resistant, but above and beyond that, we try to mitigate the addition of dust to it. Other than that, obviously, ours is to make the ground utilizable, to be utilizable, removing the existing older houses on that, making utilities available, and I don't know if there's any other questions. It's, this seems to be a pretty straightforward look at it. Obviously, as somebody asked, the slope of the hill, where it sits out there now, is in most places, maybe it's actually steeper than what is proposed, especially the two to one compared to some of this is steeper than that. And also we're doing is removing it back to create more flat ground on the bottom and less unusable ground above. Okay? Other than that, unless there's additional questions, routes and other things, like I said, are planned, is how we would do it, and it'd be done in a fairly time conscious manner, so that we could remove the dirt and continue on with the remaining project.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? No?
I don't know. I think somebody mentioned the, the lot size. Okay, here it is. Is this right? No. What are the lot, lot sizes again? Sorry.
The zone currently is R one eight, and the lot sizes are traditionally almost double that all the way through. So compared to zoning, it's, their lots are sizable.
Well, I mean, of the proposed subdivision. Oh.
Yeah, each of those lots has a square footage on them. I can't read it from here.
Okay.
But they only need to be eight thousand feet, and most of them are at least one and a half times that. What's stipulating the amount of lots we have, I'd obviously like more lots, is we, code requires so much width of frontage per lot. So that's really the restriction as to lot amounts is, so the ground is, there's more acreage to the ground than is necessary, but I can't get them narrow where to fit more lots in.
Okay, thank you.
How long do you anticipate the hill excavation removal to take?
I think my guys are a little optimistic, but they're thinking they'll have it done in a sixty day period, and that's why they're anxious to get going on it, because of the needs of another site. I would lean more towards a ninety day kind of a thing to give some cushion.
So this would be every day, eight hours a day for ninety days? I mean, weekdays?
Yeah, we're not gonna be running Saturdays and Sundays as far as that goes. But traditionally, you would be running roughly an eight hour day. On the site itself, it may not be quite that much, because as you load the truck in the morning, it goes and comes back. It may be shallow or not, because you load the last truck, you still gotta go to the site and dump, which is where the finish. But you'd be roughly seven, eight hours a day.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have is, what is the sort of the footprint as far as like equipment and, and cars and stuff that will be brought while it's actively being worked on?
The site is designed to be removed traditionally by an excavator, a larger excavator, a seventy, eighty thousand pound excavator is the main piece on the site, and possibly a water truck if there's not sufficient water from the irrigation that we already have shares for. We may bring in a grader as we get down, so as we're cutting that slope, we will, because the, basically the plan is we'll take a dozer or grader, we would clean off the topsoil, because we want to retain the topsoil back over the slope. Following that, we would remove the material, and as we get back to where we'd be the toe of the hill, we'd start to slope it. So we automatically grade from the top down at that two to one slope, so we'll finish it off at the elevation that it would be as the, the normal format. And I'd be trying to grade or grade the topsoil. We push to the top as we're going down, so it would be kind of finished by the time we hit base grade.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we're good. Yeah. We'll bring you back up if we have any more questions.
Thank you.
All right, I would like to now open the meeting for public comments. Again, I think everyone has heard this several times. Please keep your comments on time and come up to the microphone if you'd like to share something with the commission. Yes, and then the neighborhood chair first.
Before that starts, did you get the letters? You didn't read the names.
Yes, yes. I, I, thanks for reminding me. We, we did receive a, a number of letters, and everyone, I believe everyone at the commission has received and read them. I have mine right here.
Thank you. All right, that will help keep my comments a little briefer. My name's Sharon Memet. I'm the district chair for this neighborhood, and I will reference a neighborhood meeting, which at the time was not in my district, so you'll have to refer to Paul Evans if you have questions about the neighborhood meeting. Once those were moved, what is our guarantee that the project of the homes will go forward? Referring to my letter, we have concerns about what's at the north end of Canyon Road still. Please refer to staff recommendations about a bond and revegetation fund requirement. I would add in advance of approval, please. Is this area considered part of the C cause, the critical hillside overlay zone? Would retaining walls built fall in that code zone? You've sort of addressed that already. If we're willing to make this trade off for homes, of homes for hillside, how does this exception or variance not apply all across the east side, sort of negating all the efforts of the C cause? Possibly we should suggest to this owner that he look into the new code brought forward recently to sell the buildability of density to a property owner on the west side. Mr. Ardmore recently helped me understand this. He would be a better person to refer to about that possibility, and maybe Mr. Pepperone, since I don't see Aaron here anymore. Also, we have not had an opportunity to discuss the hill removal at a neighborhood meeting, which is not required by code. But when this property was presented last to the neighbors, they were discussing a very large zone change, not anything like the removal of the hillside. I would request that you please don't give approval of this tonight. There's still too many questions yet to be answered. Let's get that bond in place and the revegetation fund in place before we give that approval.
Thank you so much. All right, I would like to invite anyone else for general public comments. Time would be two minutes. Please come to the microphone, state your name and where you live.
I'm Boyd Muddle, past general contractor. I live in Garden Villa. Watched last year two homes fall off the mountainside in Draper. I keep thinking of Draper City council members wondering what in the world is going on. That was completely improperly retained. They did not do a good job. When I was doing a project over here on Osborne Lane years ago, I put in a hundred and twenty thousand dollar retaining wall, twenty feet tall, six feet deep of footings, twelve foot wide footing, solid, so it would hold up that nice gravel sandy dirt, which they're gonna propose to pull out of here. I moved out of Spanish Fort thirty years ago. Two years later, the farmer were below me. I lived over on Seadeak Drive. He came in with a little machine, and he knocked some of the hillside, the very base of it there. It, he unearthed a spring within one day. One hundred foot wide by about eighty feet tall, clear up to my property. The dirt had gone that fast. And the city came in and paid the money to come in and fix that thing. Now, the reason I'm reading this up is that up here on top of the hill that Lisa Jensen has mentioned, she's concerned about the slope. I'm concerned about the slope. We've been told that these guys are thinking of not doing retaining walls initially. Bottom line, those homes are gonna be susceptible to falling off like those Draper homes, guaranteed, and especially with this type of dirt.
Thank you. Appreciate your thoughts. Anyone else, if you'd like to come, please state your name and where you live. Perfect. Great suggestion. Please come to the front if you plan to make a comment.
My name's Gary Curl. I'm speaking for my father who couldn't be here tonight. He lives in the house that's on the adjacent.
Yeah, can you please sit close to the microphone? Thank you.
I can get close to the microphone. Gary Curl, I'm speaking for my father, Edward Curl. He lives in the house that is the north on the east common property line. And quickly, when I read the staff report, the initial thought I had was a little like getting a coupon for a pedicure, going in and coming out in double I Q T. And so this is a lot more complex than it looks like. It's not a little grading. I talked to my dad. His comment was they did a little grading in Bigham Canyon. It's now Kennicott Copper. The, I think the question the chair raised was the neighborhood chair raised, if we allow this, if you allow this here, why not everywhere? I took twenty minutes this afternoon. I made a short list of eight properties along the foothills, at points of the hill, same geologic formation, that could be buildable lots if you allowed it to be taken away. The code, a section that was referred to in the staff report, fifteen point oh seven point zero one zero, allows the commission to make a a variance to the numerical standard set forth in the code. That standard's thirty percent. Some of the slopes on the existing site are a hundred percent, some are steeper than one hundred percent. And so it's not like going from thirty to fifty to seventy. You're going from thirty to a hundred, hundred and twenty. And the last point, if you do approve it, please include an issue for addressing the tailwater. There's a canal up along the drive by the temple. The canal and dishes run down to the twenty, twenty north cul-de-sac. The tailwater runs through the property line between my father's house and the neighbor, and comes used to go over the hill down to the canal. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Could you please state your name and where you live, and then speak into the mic so we can hear you?
My name is DJ Kips. I'm a resident of Garden Villa. And I am representing Randy May Hughes, this is I'm chairman of the Garden Villa condo association, myself as a petition coordinator. The Garden Villa HOA is providing the planning commission our stock proposition with the attached position petition of seventy-three condo owners. Petition of seventy-three condo owners of the proposed leveling of the hillside adjacent the canyon road and just south, just south of our condo community. If this planned removal of the hillside is approved, it would create extended dust from the open gravel areas, noise and traffic, truck traffic for months and months. That would affect our tranquil community and increase health concerns. We also have serious concerns for the settling of the grading horse, graded portion of the hills to existing homes east of the project. The problem with rerouting the underground canal that runs through the site, the construction of the eight proposed single family homes on the site being used for multiple student housing like that of the renovation of the three existing homes across the street on Canyon Road. We appreciate your support of our petition against this development.
Thank you so much.
That's on behalf of the condo. Do I give two minutes on mine?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I apologize. Thank you though. I'll read it though. Okay, thank you so much, sir.
My name's Rebecca Schumake. I am co-chair of the Garden Villa HOA. In addition to what Dee was just talking about, I walked behind our units along the gate, their fence that we have between us and the hill today. And I noticed when the place was built, we followed the grade. So our units gradually climb. And once you get up to the, towards the east, it is retaining wall and fence. But even so, they're talking about leveling down to Provo Canyon Road. So my concern is, in addition to all the bonds they've been talking about, what transition are we going to have between us and them? Because like I said, we follow grade. And the other thing is, I'm concerned about is this hill has always been there. We don't know what the consequences will be of it not being there. We already get a lot of noise from Provo, from the stadium. We already get all the wind blowing in every time there's a storm coming in from the south. And so this is a big concern for the residents.
Thank you so much.
I'm Kay Woodworth. Um, I have a neighbor who lives very close to this. Their retaining wall was very small, comparatively speaking, not even as large as your desk area. Yeah, few, few trucks and cars going down the neighbor's um, driveway. And their retaining wall collapsed into a pile of gravel. The other thing is, where are we getting the eight thousand square feet on the lots? Is that? Is that large enough for Provo zoning? It's sure a lot smaller than my quarter acre. Are you setting a precedent? Just wondering. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Jones, twenty-nine, thirty-eight North Canyon Road. I sent you a letter. Oh, the O I was very much against the large building, multiple unit. Uh, I like the, the, the smaller but not small, this dividing up into lots for single family homes. I assume you've already gotten Paul Evans' letter too. I got a copy of it and I agree with everything he said and is going to say after me. But I'm concerned about, uh, the dangers of the hill removal. This project is another testament to give him an inch of land and he'll take a mile. Uh, especially if it's not really very big. You gotta squeeze whatever you can into it. I'm wondering about, um, the fact that Canyon Road is only one to two lanes on each side. I had a typo there. I put two to four. It's actually one to two lanes. I had to put up with construction vehicles going back and forth when they were doing the Quail Orchard Park. And sometimes when there are BYU events, there are cars parked in front of my house and I'm a mile from the stadium. I'm just wondering about the constructions, uh, construction complicated.
Thank you so much for those thoughts.
Hi, my name is Eric Chase. I'm the, I was the neighborhood district chair for the district five, which the Pleasant View neighborhood was previously. And so I actually ran the meeting for when the developer came a couple of months ago and presented, uh, their project they presented then was different. They, uh, they had originally proposed a, a large apartment complex with about a hundred, uh, units in it. I wanted to talk about the development proposal here instead of the hillside. If we take a wider view of where this area is, this property is not integrated into the existing single family neighborhood. Uh, it's surrounded by other multifamily units. It's a block away from the football stadium. It's a few blocks away from transit. It's between BYU and the dorms. And frankly, it's kind of an eyesore the way it is now. Um, the demand that we, you talked about this in your last properties, you were talking about the demand for housing in around BYU is so great that, uh, these homes, these, if you build small homes like this, they will not be owner occupied homes. Because the, the economics of it just don't work out. We have plenty of other homes all around campus that are going through the same thing in my neighborhood on one hundred west. It doesn't make financial sense for someone to buy this home and live in it when they can rent it out even to the legal number of people. And when I'm talking about the, so, but when you're forcing this kind of development and instead of a multifamily home, there's winners and losers. Then the property tax difference working to collect off of something like this compared to a big apartment complexes over a hundred thousand dollars a year that the city is losing out on. You're losing out on, in addition to the ninety-two units of housing you're losing. And those people have to go somewhere else and they're going to go into houses into other neighborhoods farther away. They're going to have to drive into this campus and that contributes to all our parking problems and traffic problems. So I, I hope that we can allow this to actually be the type of housing that there's a man form people need than, than forcing these couple small lots into the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those thoughts. Can we give Paul three minutes? Cause I believe he's the chair.
No, I'm not a chair. I'm, I'm nothing. I'm just, I'm just Mr. Citizen.
My mistake.
Uh, not a problem.
You don't get an extra minute.
No, thank you. So by my speak lab, no. I personally welcome the idea of expanding the single family homes that are available in the Pleasant View neighborhood where this project is. And, uh, the property on the general plan has been identified for R one eight um, housing, uh, for decades now. And, um, that's, but always with the idea of building it on the hill. And so this idea of removing the hill and actually adding additional lots is totally consistent with everything that has been envisioned by property owners surrounding it and by the property owner when he purchased the property. Nothing has changed. R one eight. But what we're doing by removing the hill is essentially trading the thirty percent no touch hillside and, uh, hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand cubic yards of fill for which he already has a buyer. It's already money in the bank if he can get that moved away. We're trading that for the subdivision. Once the hill is gone, there's no guarantee that this is the project. Come back with another proposal with a different layout, with a different zone request. And then we're left with the, uh, with the gravel pit until that gets resolved. So if we're going to trade the thirty percent slope, then we need to make certain that we're getting that. And, and that's a guarantee. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, seeing as there are no further comments, I'm going to close public comment. And the commission will have a discussion as we entertain the motion. If we have additional questions for the applicant, we will bring you up at that time.
Mr. Chair, may I clarify some of the questions or answer some of the questions that were asked?
Absolutely. I was going to do the same. Can you come to the mic?
Is this not working?
I do what Sandy tells me.
I'm going to start in reverse order and go with Mr. Evans and then back to the first speaker, Ms. Memet. We share Mr. Evans' concerns about guarantees as to what would get built. As the planning and engineering staff have discussed this, um, a bad scenario would be to have this hillside removed and then nothing move forward after that. That's why the staff has suggested, um, guarantees like the plat being recorded and bonding being obtained that would guarantee improvements being made in stabilization of the hillside, those types of things. So we agree with that concern and we're trying to do those things that we can do to guarantee that we get this built. Just, I'm going to back up for a minute, give a little history. The previous owner of this, who Mr. Evans and I know very well, met with me every couple of years about trying to do something much more dense than this on this property. And every time he came in and suggested that, I said, it's a R one eight zoning. I think anything more dense than that's going to have a lot of neighborhood opposition. I'm not sure you should pursue that. And so we finally sold the property. The previous proposal for the apartment building was extremely dense and intense. Staff was not particularly crazy about that because of the intensity of it, the density of it, and the neighborhood didn't seem to care for that option either. I was at the neighborhood meeting that Mr. Chase referred to. Um, there were many questions about, um, does this variance kind of precedent? Does this undermine the critical hillside overlay zone? This is not part of the critical hillside overlay zone. A variance granted on one piece of property does not, um, set precedent for other projects or properties. It's always a case by case basis. Was the other point that Mrs. Memet raised I was going to address, uh?
I wrote down.
As far as density and housing and size of lot and all that type of thing, lot three is just over twelve thousand square feet. I don't imagine lot four is the over an acre lot. The overall density of this project is two, just over two units to the acre. I don't imagine or assume that these are going to be small homes on these properties. Uh, uh, I just don't think in today's market, you're going to be able to build these at a price where you would want to build a small home on it. I'm sorry if there's something I've left out. Mr. Whitlock, please let me know.
Uh, the two questions that came up, uh, was the canal. The, if there's, I don't know if there's a staff has any purview on that.
I, I don't believe there's any canal on this property. I think I was referring to another piece of property where a canal on the property created a, a sloughing issue once the hillside was disturbed.
Um, apparently there's an underground canal called the tailwater canal is what he was referring to.
That runs through that property.
That runs underground through that property.
So part of engineering's, um, process for the approval as this goes forward will be for the geotech reports that will have to soil, uh, sample the soil and give us a report on that. If we find any evidence of underground water, the engineering department will examine all of this. I've heard the concerns that let's not get the cart before the horse, basically is what they're asking you to do. And this is the first step in a longer process that's the last to go forward. You're not approving a subdivision tonight. Planning commission doesn't approve subdivisions. Those are staff approved. The only thing you're approving is the permission to impact a thirty percent slope. If you can't grant that approval, a whole lot more review needs to take place. And if those boxes can't be checked and staff can't be satisfied that this all works and is safe, the plat never gets recorded and the hillside never comes down. Okay? So this is just the first, it makes sense for us not to require all that information if you're not going to grant the variance, right? Why would we spend, ask them to spend money on a geo technical report and then have another geo technical engineer review that report? If you're not going to approve the variance. Okay, that's why we're going through this process. Ms. Rebecca, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, even though you spelled it, spelled it for me. Raised a very good point about the change in elevation from west to east on north property line. We would want to make sure that nothing that's been built there and especially a retaining wall or something like that is being undermined. All of that will be part of the next review process. But I thought that was a very good point and something the staff will pay very close attention to. I think those are the issues I wanted to address. If there's something else I missed, please let me know.
Thank you. Uh, okay, Commissioner Jensen has a question for you, Mr. Pepperoni.
While you're up, having been part of the discussion for the critical hillside, um, overlay zone, which you just clarified this is not part of, but we talked a lot about thirty percent slopes. So there are thirty percent slopes throughout the city. This didn't fall in the cluster of them, so it's not in the overlay, but we still have the same purview. So, um, do you feel like it undermines our intent with protecting slopes if we start letting us cut away at them anyway? Or is this exactly what you had in the, you think the city had in mind when we, when we talked about that? Cause I, I just know we talked a lot about protecting the hillsides. We want to protect from having giant scars on the hillsides, from having dangerous um, erosion situations that we've inadvertently created. So do you feel, how do you feel like you can still recommend this? Like, how come you feel comfortable with it? Explain it to me.
It's situations like this. That's exactly why fifteen point oh seven was written, the section that gives you the variance approval on this. That code section was written for situations like this. The hillside overlay zone and all those discussions were um, much more focused further east in the canyon areas and the further east parts of the city. That's why this wasn't included in that map. But we realized when the, when the staff wrote the code that disallowed anyone from impacting a thirty percent slope. We knew at that time that there had to be some out on that, that applying that rule to every property uh, very strictly and without the chance for variance would probably end up being problematic. So there had to be some form, some way for someone to seek relief from that code provision that you cannot ever impact a thirty percent slope. The city engineering department itself impacts thirty percent slopes when they build roads and they create steeper slopes than that when they build roads.
I have a question for you. You mentioned, uh, the bond being sort of a requirement of approval, but it wasn't mentioned in the staff report, at least not explicitly.
The CRC comments.
That's what, that's what that means. Oh, it's in the CRC comments. Got it. Okay. That's what I failed to connect.
That's why it wasn't repeated.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that.
And that bond is not only for making sure the hillside is handled correctly, but that bond is for all of the subdivision improvements that the road gets built, that the curving got to get put in, all those kinds of.
So this, this concern of you take the dirt, you go sell the dirt and then you leave it. That's part of the bond in the CRC comments.
Right.
Correct. Got it. Are there any other questions for any of the public commenters or the applicant? I have a small question for you, if you wouldn't mind just coming real fast. I just want to understand something a little bit better. If you could explain it to me. I'm learning through this, uh, experience that I don't have the best like geospatial imagination. So I, I, I know someone who lives in Garden Villa and I do know that they're, they're actually in this building right here that's on the top of the map. And that's, it's very close to that hill. And so just help me visualize kind of how that hill will. And so just help me visualize kind of how that hill will change, the, the one on the north, right above Garden Villa.
North, oh, Garden Villa.
Yep.
If you see the contour lines, the engineer has already told me that he's preserved the retaining walls and other things that are there. The grade slopes from North Canyon, it slopes up at a grade following the, that's why you see the contour lines. It slopes from North Canyon up to the hill. Um, to take into account, that's why you see something different on the contour lines to the north than you do to the south. Because of the south, we're dealing with ground that is way below even our base, excuse me, our base grade. And so this has been designed based on existing properties on both sides and also on the back.
So that, that's, that, uh, slope will not change very much. Or it'll kind of go down gradually back towards canyon.
Based on what's drawn out, it actually is flat, then it slopes a little down to the retaining wall that's there.
Got it.
And I don't know that it makes any difference, but they're not paying anything for the dirt. It's an opportunity to get rid of it so we can develop something. I'm, I don't get a red sand out of dirt.
I hear you. I hear you. The property is worth probably a lot more than the dirt, but I, I hear you. Thank you. Good clarification. I'm sorry, I've closed public comment. I apologize. We got to stick to the protocol of the meeting. All right. Uh, we're going to now open up for discussion among the commission.
I just wanted to, uh, answer one question that was asked that didn't get addressed about, you know, are these lots big enough for Provo? And the answer is yes, we go as small as six thousand square feet on some single lots. And so just to clarify that. Thank you.
I would love to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. So how are we feeling, Commissioner? Any, any thoughts, reactions? We're all trying to imagine 3D geospace.
Yeah, we just need a minute, I think. It's flat. I don't know what you guys are worried about. There's no hill there. Speaking of being geospatially deficient. Um, I thought it was interesting, commissioners, that of all the comments we heard, one person actually thought it wasn't dense enough. That they wanted it, that I think that's worth just thinking about. Um, another person said, or I think maybe that same person said it was separate from the neighborhood, which I actually kind of like, because anyone who has concern about traffic going through, I don't see that as a disadvantage. I see that as an advantage. I also think getting rid of a hillside road and having a nice flat one is a huge, a huge plus. I built my house in an area that had untouched hillside behind it. And for the first three years we lived there, we had constant excavation and compaction of soils and dust and noise and walls vibrating. And it's annoying, but it's also not against the law. So when you built, when you have vacant land, it's the nature of the beast. So I wish that I could say that's horrible. We can't do that. But ninety days is better than three years. So I don't know. Just, I just want you to know, we're hearing those concerns, but I don't know how we can say you can't build a project because it's going to make dust. Cause that happens everywhere. I know this is a special exception and it is, it will be excessive, but just saying that out loud. Um, I feel really comfortable with the guarantees that the city departments are writing into this to ensure that we don't just approve a gravel pit, but that we approve something that will become something. I don't think it addresses affordable housing in the city at all. But it does address housing. So that's still a thing. I love that it gives good access to utilities and that it's taking traffic onto a road that was intended to carry traffic.
So what zone was this in?
R one eight.
R one eight.
One eight.
Which is kind of funny because the area to the north is, is it R one eight for the Garden Villa?
Shouldn't it be?
So it's kind of a weird, I think it's R one eight because the hillside's R one eight and it's going to the west. And then the stadium terrace apartments been below it.
Can't have this mixed use.
Yeah. Okay. So, you know, the, they may be right that somebody doesn't want a single family neighborhood there. But if the developer is willing, I don't know. How do you guys feel about that?
I feel like either one is good.
Okay.
Uh, I, I, I definitely think this would be a really good place for more dense housing because it's right by BYU. And I, I actually, um, lived in a, in, uh, Edgewood condos and would walk and bike even farther away. And so, um, but if that's not acceptable, I mean, I think we, we need all kinds of housing. Like, um, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting your name, Jonathan.
Jonathan, yeah.
But I mean, your last name.
Hill.
Commissioner Hill.
We're, we're going to get rid of the hill probably though.
Like he said earlier, like he said earlier, there are large families too, you know? It's not just young, small families. There are a lot of those, but there are also larger families who might, you know, want this. Um, so I think either is good, to be honest. Any addition, like we were saying, no, one thing is going to do everything, but all those little tiny things all over will help.
Do you have any thoughts, Commissioner Keeson?
I feel better about it. Originally, when it looked like they were going to remove the whole east side and move it to the west side, I had my, wasn't too thrilled about it. But I think if they go about it right and if they go through the procedures, which they've outlined, which, uh, Mr. Pepperoni just said about the different steps that they will have to go through. I, I think it can be a good addition to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think several of the, the comments, as well as the letters we received, they weren't necessarily opposed to adding, you know, additional houses in the neighborhood that are probably going to be nice, large new homes. It was mostly concerns about dealing with this hill property, revegetation, ensuring that happens, bonding. And, and I think that's what we're considering before us is essentially allowing them to, to kind of have an, a conditional override of the thirty percent. But with very strict requirements around, around these things that are very important to you. So.
Couple of comments. I appreciate that they're not doing the max slope that the geotechnical report said. I like when we're not pushing the limits that way. From what David Day and others are saying, this is a, a conservative slope. Yeah, the biggest risk I see is they find a spring or something like that underneath and that might cause issues. But it sounds like there are protections in place, um, to mitigate those if they occur. Um, so I'm confident we're not going to have a draper situation in this place because the city is very vigilant on this and seems to be very involved. I do have, I do agree as well, a mixture of housing types is very important. I was surprised they didn't try for more density in this place, but I'm happy to take what's presented to me, right? And just look at it for its merits and what is there. And then finally, I see in the staff report, it specifically says there are additional conditions that staff would recommend as required before permits are issued. Do we need to do anything to make those requirements or are they already required and going to happen? In those cases.
I don't believe there's anything else you need to elaborate on or enumerate.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was interesting to note that it appears that there are less linear feet of hillside when this excavation is done, because it doesn't go around the entire edge. It just cuts it in half.
That's true.
So there's actually less hill to retain at a similar slope.
Good spatial reasoning. Good job.
I'm learning.
Just FYI.
Not all of us can be hill specialists.
Yeah. Yes, Commissioner, or Mr. Pepperoni?
Just FYI for the commission members. I was just doing market research on the west side of Provo because of some projects that are coming online or will be coming online out there. The market value for an eight thousand square foot lot on the west side of Provo, fully improved eight thousand square foot lot is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Just for the lot.
Just for the lot.
And that's on the west side.
It's on the west side. So the rule of thumb in real estate is if the lot is a hundred and eighty, the home is going to be around or at least seven hundred and twenty.
So is that supposed to encourage us or discourage us from the decision we have before us?
Uh, I think, I think it's encouraging in terms of the quality of home that would be built, but it certainly is discouraging in terms of any, of affordability, housing affordability.
But if that's the case, we should just only build townhomes because nobody can afford them either.
Every community needs its millionaires. Um, I'm just kidding. So I think, yeah, yeah, that's interesting. I, I, one thought, one comment that was made that I thought was an interesting comment was about how these will probably end up being student rentals. Um, but maybe not at that price point.
Yeah, I would say that's pretty.
Not legal ones anyway, not with three matching singles on them.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't think they would be legal.
On that note, I mean, we, we talk about this, but when you create high end lots, those people do move out of other houses, right? And they move out of mid range houses, which means someone can move into the mid range house. And so there is kind of a trickle down effect. Not saying we should only build big houses either, but it's, it's not hurting the lower end stock in this case.
I have a question for staff. Um, we talked a lot about the precautions that we're trying to put in place with anything that's done to ensure that we don't just excavate and, and nothing happens. What if, um, they receive approval to cut into the slope and then they revisit the idea of having higher density there? Getting a zone change, whatever, like, how do the precautions that you've recommended play into? Cause sometimes that happens, a business model changes it. So are we saying this has to be houses once the bulldozer starts digging away? Or is there any wiggle room for something different to be proposed?
I don't believe there's wiggle room because of requiring the plat to be recorded, requiring bonding that goes with this plat. I don't think there would be wiggle room. That's the point of doing this, taking those steps.
So when you bond at the plat recording, does that mean they lose a whole ton of money if they reneg on the subdivision plans?
The city then has the money to go build it if they won't.
Okay. Okay. So it's, it's a significant bond.
Yes.
Not just you broke the sidewalk, you have to replace it.
No, the bond is sufficient for the city to go in and build this entire thing as you're looking at it.
Okay. Okay. So.
In fact, it's, it's ten or twenty percent above that.
So if they have any thoughts of changing, they would have to go back. They would have to do that before they dig any dirt from the hill, essentially with these. Okay. Thank you.
How are we feeling, commissioners? Do we want to do a motion or any more discussion?
I've learned over my years on the planning commission that the staff has done a lot of research and that developers aren't going to put money into something that they don't believe the market can support. And I'm usually a naysayer about setting precedents, but I'm feeling good about this. That this is kind of a risky zoning proposition, like to put single family in a place where normally it doesn't seem logical. And if the developer feels like that's worth doing, I'm all for having good quality housing right there. So I'd be inclined to say, let's, I would approve it.
I, I wondered about that because there's right near my house, there's a little, almost just like this. I think there's maybe five or six homes, large homes. Um, and they've been pretty much done for a while and I haven't seen, there's still for sale signs on all but one. So I don't know, I don't know how, uh, encouraging or discouraging. I'm not a, I'm not an economist or anything, but I'm, I mean, yeah. I, I look at that and I, I doubt a little bit like you said, Lisa, but, um, I, I'm, I'm fine with this. If the, there's no alternative. I mean, I would be fine, like I said, either way with more dens or not.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to just say one more thing. We're really making a decision on whether we're okay with a thirty percent slope being cut into for our housing development. And we like this plan and the city will take it from there. But our decision tonight is we're okay with the slope cutting.
Yeah, in this context.
Right. We're not approving the subdivision as laid out here. We're just saying those are the parameters that it would be approved for, but if they don't want it, they can still come back. We're just saying you can cut the slope. Is that what everyone understands?
Yeah, that's right.
I'm okay with that. I feel like the safe, the engineering department, the, the permitting, all that goes into that. I feel like there's great oversight in place to protect people above and below.
Yeah, referring back to the, the letters and the comments, I feel like it, the, this includes all of those. And as, um, Mr. Pepperoni said in the CRC comments, whatever. So I think they hit all the marks on those.
I'm actually kind of excited to see how, how an idea like this could play out too. I think it could be really nice.
Just on a person, like a personal judgment note, as we're kind of being asked to make a judgment on this. I, I do say that, given the developer's experience, that I watched the video about the temple. That's an immensely complicated effort. And so it does give me a little bit of confidence that this can be done in, in a highly professional way, especially if this, if the city can curse.
Cool.
I can make a motion. I move that we approve, uh, item four, Tyson Reynolds requests preliminary subdivision approval for a new eight lot, single family subdivision, including grading slopes of over thirty percent in the R one point eight, one family residential zone located at two thousand North Canyon Road, Pleasant View neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing as there's no discussion on the motion, I'll call for a vote.
Hold on. Discussion.
We do have discussion.
Um, that this approval is based on the conditions outlined being met.
Yeah.
And the conditions are that they address all the CRC comments, obtain a geotechnical report, which I think they've already done, record the final plat, supply required, bonding and revegetate the area as required. So that would be adding those conditions to the motion. You okay with that?
Yeah, I think that's what I asked Bill about and he said we didn't need to enumerate them.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to enumerate them.
It, it can make us all feel, you know, sleep well tonight. So we've enumerated them. All right. I'll call for a vote then. Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
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 And I will also vote aye. That's, uh, passes unanimously. That was our last item of the evening. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
A second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. The commission meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for attending and for your comments.